I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, September 7, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Gary, can you lead us in the invocation?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to serve you and serve the citizens of this great city. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the strength to provide the needs of the community. And we pray that you allow us to go in the direction that's going to be beneficial to this fine community. We ask all these things in your name, in the Father's, Son, and Holy Spirit on this day.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're going to go to presentations and proclamations, which is an update on Com Brown Harbor Bulkhead with Javier Solis from J M Davidson.
Good evening. Got good update. We're almost done. We're at ninety-one percent behind the pavilion. Gary, I put some pictures up. So this is how it looked when we all started. Look at it again. We started putting in some bull rock in there. We put all the bull rock until we got above what we needed from the engineer, that the engineer gave us. We started putting some new tiebacks. Everything's brand new in there. Tiebacks, covers, new wall right next to the pavilion. Take it again, Gary. The new sewer drain is also in there. We compacted, put everything that, all the geotech, everything done. Keep going, Gary. We put the form up last Friday. We put, last Friday, we poured sixty yards. We poured the whole curve already, the whole bulkhead. One more, Gary. That was last week on Friday. We were out there doing the whole work. And today, then we took off everything that's behind, closer to the pavilion, all the form work in the back, filled it up. And we, we are expected to put in top dirt tomorrow. So we'll be out of there this weekend by Thursday. And we'll come back next week. And all we have left is the concrete behind the pavilion and the handrail set that we tore off when we had to take off that concrete. But other than that, that is going to be complete hopefully by the end of the next week. We're starting next, this week, probably Thursday, on the other side of the harbor. And we're going to be starting putting the concrete sheep piles. I don't know if you guys made it out there. If there's a bunch of concrete sheep piles throwing on the side of the road, those are ours. We're expected to do that hopefully Thursday. But other than that, everything else is smooth. We tested the area around the concrete sheep house. So hopefully knock on wood, none of this happens again. And we keep doing what we gotta do to get out of there. I think one more, Gary. I took one this morning. Put some of the forms in dirt already. So it looks good. It looks brand new. Another hundred years.
And I do want to say that you have done a great job. And I know it was an engineering problem that caused most of it. But you guys, you've guys have been there every day.
We're here to please you guys. So hopefully from here on out, we're good. And we'll get everything done. You guys have any questions for me?
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to get an update on the SCADA system from Eric Villarreal, Ordura Group, and Charles Offord, Dedicated Controls.
Good evening. Eric's not available today. I'm Charles Offord, Dedicated Controls. Y'all seen me before. Since last month, we, we finished up the towers, put the one up at the office, I guess I'll call it, the municipal works building. We got that one put up. So all the underground, the grounding, the towers, and everything's ready for the installation. So the computers come in. We've working on the screen development. We delivered nine panels to Michael. And they've stored them on site a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So our, you know, our next phase moving forward, we're, we're finishing up the screen development and the testing and programming. We kept two panels back in our shop so that we can simulate real, real world information. And during the Thursday bi-monthly meeting that we do a phone call in, it was kind of decided that what we'll do is when we get down here, we're going to put the computer in first, get one panel up and going. So if they're communicating, we surely don't want to put something in and have an issue with anything, you know. So we'll, we'll put, put the panel in. We'll have all the alarms set so that the very first one will be right off the bat. Everything will be ready to go, and we won't jump into anything. And then we're going to let it run for one week and then see any, any issues that we have, and then we'll put all the rest of them in. So that's our, that's our update from where we were to here and what we're looking for in the future. Timeframe looks like the week of the twentieth. We'll be down the week of the twentieth. It'll give us two more weeks to get everything on the computer and get everything finalized. And really, we want, we want to put a really good system in for you. And we don't want to jump the gun. And we're, we're right here at the end of this thing. So we're, we're looking forward to, you know, having everything smooth. So if, if we see any issues in the shop, we'll take care of them before you ever see them. So that's, that's our main goal. And, and being able to have those alarms in place so that you get the alarm first when anything happens in the field. So nobody calls you. That's, that's the key to anything. It's just like on the water side. On the water side, you don't want the highest person in your system to give you a call and say, hey, I don't, I don't have no water. But anyway, that's beside the point. So anything? Thank y'all so much.
Now, we're going to go to an update on the wastewater treatment, plant electrical.
Yeah, unfortunately, the contractor and the engineer both have cases with COVID that they're dealing with. So I want to give you a quick update on the electrical. Right now, the, by next Monday, we should be back up and powered up to full power and not using generator. Currently, they sit, they're stating that the twenty-third of this month will be completion. That puts them a little bit over a month ahead of schedule, which is good. The biggest downfall right now has been the COVID impacting materials and staff. But they've got everything that they need there on site. And once they switch over power on Monday, the next step would be fixing all the lighting out there that is down, that doesn't work, and replacing all those light poles. And after that, we should be fully operational. So that's where we stand right now. Any questions?
No? You haven't run into any problems?
The only issue they've had is while pulling those old wires through the conduit, some of them have gotten stuck because they're old and they've been there since the plant was built. But they worked around that. At this point, that's the only issue. There was an issue when the generator that they originally rented was backfiring, had issues there. We resolved it and got it going. So at this point, knock on wood, the next two weeks will be complete and out of there ahead of schedule.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? And I guess you're going to be doing the update on the Euclid pump station?
Yes, sir. John had, was sick this morning too, so I sent him home so he can get some rest. But good news on this one. I did get to meet with him and got some updates. The hundred horsepower pump is at our shop already. The other two, or the motors at our pump, the two pumps for the electric and the diesel have been repaired, put back together and ready to go. The tenth, which is this Friday, is scheduled delivery for the big one. And then the diesel engine is already put together, operational. They tested it and it's ready to be delivered as well. The only pending issue is the right angle gear, which is scheduled for mail out on the seventeenth of this month. Once they receive that, that's what they need for the final pump. And we're not scheduling to put anything in until we have everything in hand so that we don't have to use the crane more than once. So we're looking, hopefully, once the right angle gear gets here within the next two weeks, we should have all the pumps going in and all the engines going in and everything going operational. The trash basin though is also going into the Euclid ditch itself. It's being constructed already. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that one installed as well. And that's going to go maybe five hundred to a thousand feet upstream to catch the big debris before it makes it to the pump station. We also received the third and final quote for the VFD, which is what's going to control that big horsepower pump automatically. So we don't have to have someone babysitting the pump. And so we'll be requesting the PO for that one here this week so we can get that going as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're going to go to on the update on American Rescue Plan. Mr. Gary Edwards.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this program continues to move forward nicely, actually. This is the, the program for the federal government administered by the state that provides just a little over $2 million for infrastructure, more specifically water and sewer, or for areas of town that do not have water and sewer. We have brought on an administrative consultant, very necessary because environmental issues are involved with this, and also an engineer. And so they're beginning to move forward with the design work. The funding is there. And the administrative consultant and the engineer are all in place. So it is moving forward nicely. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to the board and commission appointments.
There's one vacancy on, on this board in the regular membership due to the recent death of Dr. Bailey. The board has a policy of moving up the longest
We started putting in some bull rock in there. Put all the bull rock until we got above what we needed from the engineer, that the engineer gave us. We started putting some new tiebacks. Everything's brand new in there. Tiebacks, covers, new wall right next to the pavilion. Take it again, Gary? The new sewer drain is also in there. We compacted, put everything that, all the geotech, everything done. Keep going, Gary? We put the form up last Friday. We put, last Friday, we poured sixty yards. We poured the whole curve already, the whole bulkhead. One more, Gary? That was last week on Friday. We were out there doing the, the whole work. And today, then we took off everything that's behind, closer to the pavilion, all the formwork in the back, filled it up, and we, we are expected to put in top dirt tomorrow. So, we'll be out of there this weekend by Thursday, and we'll come back next week. And all we have left is the concrete behind the pavilion and the handrail set that we tore off when we had to take off that concrete. But other than that, that is gonna be complete hopefully by the end of the, next week. We're starting next, this week, probably Thursday, on the other side of the harbor, and we're gonna be starting putting the concrete sheep house. I don't know if you guys made it out there. If there's a bunch of concrete sheep house throwing on the side of the road, those are ours. Uh, we're expected to do that hopefully Thursday. But other than that, everything else is smooth. We tested the area around the concrete sheep house, so hopefully no, knock on wood, none of this happens again. And we keep doing what we gotta do to get out of there. I think one more, Gary. I took one this morning, put some of the forms in dirt already. It looks good. It looks brand new, and another hundred years.
And I do wanna say that you have done a great job, and I know it was an engineering problem that caused most of it, but you guys, you've guys have been there every day.
We're here to please you guys, so hopefully from here on out, we're good, and we'll get everything done. You guys have any questions for me?
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna get an update on the SCADA system from Eric Villarreal, Ordura Group, and Charles Offord Dedicated Controls.
Good evening. Eric's not available today. I'm Charles Offord Dedicated Controls. Y'all seen me before. Since last month, we, we finished up the towers, uh, put the one up at the office, I guess I'll call it, the municipal works building. We got that one put up. So, all the underground, the grounding, the towers, and everything's ready for the installation. So, the computers come in, we've, uh, working on the screen development. We delivered, uh, nine panels, um, to Michael, and they've, uh, stored them on site, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I guess. So, our, you know, our next phase moving forward, we're, we're finishing up the screen development and the testing and programming. We kept two panels back in our shop so that we can simulate real, real world information. And, uh, during the, uh, Thursday bi-monthly meeting, uh, that we do a phone call in, uh, it was kinda decided that what we'll do is when we get down here, we're gonna put the computer in first, get one panel up and going, so if they're communicating, we surely don't wanna put something in and have an issue with anything, you know? So, we'll, we'll put, put the panel in, we'll have all the alarms set, so that the very first one will be right off the bat. Everything will be ready to go, and we won't jump into anything. And then we're gonna let it run for one week, and then see any, any issues that we have, and then we'll put all the rest of them in. So, that's our, that's our update from where we were to here and what we're looking for in the future.
Time frame?
Time frame looks like the week of the twentieth. We'll be down the week of the twentieth. It'll give us two more weeks to get everything on the computer and get everything finalized and really, we want, we wanna put a really good system in for you, and we don't wanna jump the gun, and we're, we're right here at the end of this thing. So, uh, we're, we're looking forward to, you know, having everything smooth. So, if, if we see any issues in the shop, we'll take care of them before you ever see them. So, that's, that's our main goal. And, and being able to have those alarms in place so that you get the alarm first when anything happens in the field, so nobody calls you. That's, that's the key to anything. It's just like on the water side. On the water side, you don't want the highest person in your system to give you a call and say, "Hey, I don't, I don't have no water." But anyway, that's beside the point, so. Anything? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to an update on the wastewater treatment, plant electrical. And I guess...
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, the contractor and the engineer both have, uh, cases with COVID that they're dealing with, so I wanna give you a quick update on the electrical. Right now, the, by next Monday, we should be back up and powered up to full power and not using generator. Currently, they sit, they're stating that the twenty-third of this month will be completion. Uh, that puts them a little bit over a month ahead of schedule, which is good. The biggest downfall right now has been the COVID, uh, impacting materials and staff. But they've got everything that they need there on site, and once they switch over power, uh, on Monday, the next step will be fixing all the lighting out there that, uh, is down, that doesn't work, and replacing all those light poles. And after that, we should be fully operational, so that's where we stand right now. Any questions?
No? You haven't run into any problems?
The only issue they've had is while pulling those old wires through the conduit, some of them have gotten stuck because they're old, and they've been there since the plant was built. Uh, but they worked around that, uh, at this point. That's the only issue. There was an issue when the generator that they originally rented was, uh, backfiring, had issues there. We resolved it and got it going, so at this point, knock on wood, the next two weeks will be complete and out of there ahead of schedule.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? And I guess you're gonna be doing the update on the Euclid pump station?
Yes, sir. John had, was sick this morning too, so I sent him home so he can get some rest, but, uh, good news on this one. Uh, I did get to meet with him and got some updates. The hundred horsepower pump is at our shop already. The other two, uh, or the motors at our pump, the two pumps for the electric and the diesel have been repaired, put back together and ready to go. Uh, the tenth, which is this Friday, is scheduled delivery for the big one. Uh, and then the diesel engine is already put together, operational. They tested it, and it's ready to be delivered as well. Uh, the only pending issue is the right angle gear, which is scheduled for, uh, mail out on the seventeenth of this month. Once they receive that, that's what they need for the final pump, and we're not scheduling to put anything in until we have everything in hand so that we don't have to use the crane more than once. So, we're looking, hopefully, once the right angle gear gets here within the next two weeks, we should have all the pumps going in and all the engines going in and everything going operational. Uh, the trash basin though is also going into the Euclid ditch itself. It's being constructed already. So, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that one installed as well. And that's gonna go maybe five hundred to a thousand feet upstream to catch the big debris before it makes it to the pump station. We also received the third and final quote for the VFD, which is what's gonna control that big horsepower pump automatically, so we don't have to have someone, uh, babysitting the pump. And, uh, so we'll be requesting the PO for that one, uh, here, this week, so we can get that going as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're gonna go to on the update on American Rescue Plan, Mr. Gary Edwards.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, this program continues to move forward nicely, actually. Uh, this is the, uh, the program for the federal government administered by the state that provides, uh, just a little over two million dollars for infrastructure, more specifically water and sewer, or for areas of town that do not have, uh, water and sewer. Uh, we have, uh, brought on an administrative consultant, very necessary because environmental issues are involved with this, uh, and also an engineer, and so they're beginning to move forward with the design work. The funding is there, and, uh, the administrative consultant and the engineer all in place, so it is moving forward nicely. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to the board and commission appointments.
There's one vacancy on, on this board in the regular membership due to the, um, um, recent death of, of Dr. Bailey. Um, the board has a policy of, of moving up the longest-serving alternate member to the regular membership, and that member is Vincent Cluss. So, staff is recommending that Mr. Cluss be moved to the regular membership.
Will I make a motion that we, uh, that we, uh, move, um, Mr. Cluss to the, uh, zoning board of adjustments? Second?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless council members are requested. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
Before, before we take action on this item, I need to advise you of two corrections that need to be made to the minutes. The first one is, on the minutes for July twenty-ninth, um, it needs to be corrected to reflect that Mayor Potem Scruggs was the one that called the meeting to order as Mayor Gomez was not present at that meeting. So, that correction will need to be made. And the second correction will need to be made to the August second minutes to correct that Councilmember Oregel was present via conference phone. So, she's, she's listed as being present. I just didn't indicate that she was there via conference phone. So, when you make your motion, you need to make it as corrected, to approve the minutes as corrected.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of July twenty-ninth, uh, regular meeting August second, and special meeting August tenth with corrections.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to public hearing for the Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget, and I'm gonna open the public hearing on the Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm sorry, nevermind. If I may give some background on this, uh, prior to the public hearing. Uh, the Crime Control Board has budgeted thirty-three hundred dollars for auditing services. That's the case with MDD also, I believe. We're right at that. Uh, three hundred and fifty dollars for professional services, two hundred for insurances, one million three seventy-five for supplemental, uh, to supplement the Police Department budget, forty-four thousand for the E-nine-one-one service, and three thousand for the Fire Department. Uh, so the board met, Crime Control Board met on August twelfth, and unanimously approved, uh, the entire budget, which I believe you have a copy of.
Hector Rios, ten forty-four South Commercial, what's the balance of that budget inside the crime prevention?
The balance of the budget?
Yeah, you had the balance.
One second.
You want it fund balance, or you just want it on the expenses?
Fund balance. Please. Are both? Please.
The expenses that we're presenting right now are for one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Their fund balance, their projected year after twenty twenty-two is over. Their projected fund balance is, is going to be one million five hundred thou, one million five hundred and thirteen thousand five sixty-one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I declare this public hearing closed, and now we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution adopted the Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I make a motion that we adopt the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I'm gonna go to Aransas Pass Municipal Development District budget, and I'm gonna open up the public hearing on the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
If I may give some background information on this also, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, um, MDD board budgeted thirty-three hundred, just like the previous board, for auditing services. Ten thousand for capital outlay, fifty thousand for building maintenance,
Is that it?
I guess that's Mike's the one that's had the problems.
Okay. I asked that to be repeated for public purposes?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, what was just said, is that what you're asking? If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
After all the interruption?
Sure, absolutely. Um, again, the, uh, board is, uh, budgeted, um, uh, again, we're talking about the Municipal Development Board or District. Uh, the thirty-three hundred for auditing services, just as the previous board did. Ten thousand for capital outlay, fifty thousand for building maintenance, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand for debt service, paying off the Civic Center. Uh, and two forty for Civic Center deficit, and on August eighteenth, uh, the board met, and they unanimously approved, uh, this budget.
Any other questions? Okay, well, then I declare this public hearing closed, and now we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution adopting the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
I make a motion to adopt the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go...
Wait a minute, and I think Mary wanna go when I s, when we were on the crime prevention, I think I read out the municipal. So, I think we've acted on the municipal one twice. Pretty sure I said municipal instead of crime prevention, Crime Control and Prevention District budget, the first one. Okay. All right, so I make a motion, oh, where were we? Six one. Make a motion to adopt the Aransas Pass Crime Control and Prevention District budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, now, they're, they're both done.
Okay, now, they're both done. Now, we're gonna go to the fiscal year for the City of Aransas Pass, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, operating budget.
We start on these items, the next three?
The next three items, uh, I'm sorry, the, the next two items. I will be calling for a roll call vote on those two.
Okay, good evening. Um, uh, before the meeting, I passed out, uh, the budget to you all. I do apologize for the delay. We worked over the weekend trying to get this, uh, together. But if I may, I do apologize when I was printing it. After printing it, I realized that it didn't have numbers, so I'm gonna have you turn to your pages. It's, uh, it's about three or four pages in. It's one that's, it says, uh, consolidated proposed, uh, budget summary page. And it just basically, I just wanted, got you to that page. That's just really all the funds that we have. All our funds summarized. It's three pages worth of fund summary, and it'll explain to you, um, what our revenues are gonna be, what we're projecting our revenues, uh, to be, what we're projecting our expenditures to be, and what the beginning fund balance is, and what we're projecting the ending fund balance is for each fund to be at, uh, when, uh, when it's all said and done, this time next year, hopefully. And, um, this budget includes the COLA for all employees of three percent, as we discussed last week. It includes the salary increase for police officers of two dollars. It includes the salary increase, the pay increase of a dollar ten for dispatchers from the Police Department as well. Uh, one new firefighter that we're gonna be hiring for the Fire Department as well. And also, we are, uh, that's pretty much what, what, what's gonna be included in the, in this, in this budget. As we presented to you all last week on Thursday, that this was, uh, the proposed budget that we're, we're presenting for your approval tonight. The fund balance is gonna end up in the neighborhood of about thirty-four percent, slightly above that. So, that's good. Like we said, we, we wanna always strive to get that closer to the forty percent mark. Sometimes, you know, we gotta draw that down a little bit, and that's fine. But we're in a much better place than we were several years ago, where our fund balance was eleven percent. And so, that's, that says a lot. Do you all have any questions?
Mary, can you open the public hearing?
Okay, open the public hearing.
Okay, I wanna open the public hearing on the operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Hector Rios, ten forty-four South Commercial, when you said two dollars per police officer?
Two dollars per hour.
Per hour. And what's that in percentage?
It depends on, on their plan, where they are at, because everybody's at different levels, okay? So, it's about, you're looking about maybe four thousand and change. Oh, hold on a minute.
And then is that gonna be, uh, on top of the three percent?
No, the police officers and the dispatchers are not getting a three percent COLA. They're, they're getting the one-ten, the dispatchers, and the police officers are getting two dollars. All the other employees are gonna be getting the three percent.
So, could it be? And, um, where, where their pay scale at?
It just depends where their pay scale is. Correct. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say yes or no, because I, I need to look at those numbers before I make, before I commit myself to saying that.
And then, and this actual budget is, is not totally correct, correct? There's, there's mistakes on this? Is there any way we can maybe table this until?
Why is it not correct?
Didn't she mention something about something?
Oh, the page numbers. The page numbers are not numbered. No, no, once, once, once I upload it on the, on the site, it will be numbered with page numbers. It's just when I printed it, and I had already printed eight sets, I didn't wanna reprint a hundred and thirty pages again of eight, eight different times, like a thousand pages again. So, that's the only reason. But when we upload it to the website, it will be individually numbered in the corner. That's the only problem.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Any other questions? Sure, come on up.
To the city manager's point earlier, when you mentioned in the municipal, um, district, uh, development thing, we had like, what, you said thirty-three hundred for audited services?
Thirty-three hundred for auditing services.
So, just in that particular?
Just in that department.
Who, who audits our budget, like the city budget?
Our books, yes. We do have, our auditor is Frigga Nakul.
Okay, so there's money aside from that and everything?
Yes, her contract is.
That's my question.
Any other questions?
And our audits are available online as well.
Okay, well, I declare the public hearing closed. And now we're gonna consider an act on ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-three fifty-seven, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-two, beginning October first, twenty twenty-one, and authorizing the mayor to execute any related documents.
I make a motion that we, um, approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-five thirty-seven. I'm sorry, forty-three fifty-seven, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and authorizing the mayor to execute any related documents.
I second.
Okay, with the council?
Aye.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, remember?
Oh, that's right. As for ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-three fifty-seven, Councilmember Oregel?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Scruggs?
Yes.
And Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to twenty twenty-one property tax rate, and we're gonna open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-one tax year property tax rate of zero point seven eight four four eight one.
Well, okay, basically, that's gonna be the proposed tax rate that we're proposing for the budget that we just adopted. That rate is comprised of two numbers, which is the maintenance and operation number. That is zero point four four seven nine one, and then the interest and sinking, which is for debt service. And that is zero point three three seven two eight eight. This, but this tax rate will generate more revenue, so it is, in essence, technically a tax increase, because the property values may have gone up, and that is out of our control. That has to do with the appraisal district. All right, so you may, we may, we will be collecting more revenue into the city crawlers, but that is not because we've increased their property, property value. This is, however, a lower tax rate than last year. Last year, we had, this current year, we're about to end, we had a higher, uh, tax rate. So, this is a lower rate than that of last year, but it is basically, we are collecting more revenue because of that, and we also know that we have, you know, seeing more homes, more businesses in the community, and as that continues, we're obviously, our, our, our tax base is going to be increasing as our property values go up.
Could you please tell us, um, what the, uh, twenty twenty tax rate, property tax rate was, so that people understand how much we are going down?
Yes, let me just get it, uh, let me just find it real quick. I should have had it written down. I do apologize about that. I know it's seventy-nine, but I don't know the, um, the, all the, the breakdown. Hold on, give me a minute. I do apologize, property tax rates.
Are you looking for the number that's on the front of, front of our manual that you just gave us?
No, what, what does it say there? I am so sorry.
It says seven nine nine one nine four?
Yes, I am so sorry. I have, I don't have a printed copy.
So, it's, it's point seven nine nine one nine four.
Thank you.
Last year, and it's going down.
Correct.
Just point seven eight four four eight one.
Yes. Thank you about, thank you for that. I just, I don't have a printed copy myself. Sorry.
And I can't, I can't remember, Sandra. I asked you, and I, wherever I wrote it down, I lost just to have it. What did? I think one cent's generating seventy-two thousand right now, isn't it? I know.
May I get back with you on that?
Sure, no problem. Alright, thanks.
Because I gotta think that through. So, I will get back with you on that by tomorrow, sir. Yes. Sorry about that. I was not prepared.
Any other questions?
This tax rate is just for the inner-city limits of Aransas Pass, not excluding what just got deannished?
Correct.
Okay, great. Uh, as taxpaying Americans, uh, things go up, this is kinda what we gotta do, so, um, you know, I'm kinda in support of it.
This went down?
This is what, well, I mean, but anyway, any kind of, well, I know, I understand, but any kind of taxes, you know, that's what we gotta do. You know, this is, this is, we're in a beautiful area. Uh, it's gonna increase. I think next year, we're gonna look at some really different numbers. I'm sure we are, but yes, I'm, I'm, I like that. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Susan Burns, nine three five, South Bay Street. I contested my taxes this year because they were higher than what we paid for the house. Last September, we purchased it, and the taxes were twenty-five percent higher than what we paid for the house. I had to prove with the closing documents on, on the house what we paid for it, and they said that I would be granted a lower tax rate for one year. Just one year. So, I won for one year.
Yay.
I don't know what's gonna happen next year.
You just have to go back every year, every year.
I have to go back every year and contest. Why? Why is that such an issue, that we're taxed more than what we paid for the house? Why, why is that such an issue, that we're taxed more than what we paid for the house?
Yeah, that's counting.
It's happening all over the state.
Yep, and that's the county, not us.
The appraisal district.
So just a small point, right? So when the tax rates go down, that's wonderful, but when the values of the homes go up, there's a lot more money out of pocket, that's the point.
That's the reason why we went down.
That's why we went down, exactly. That's, we felt, we did to do that.
Any other comments? Well, I declare this public hearing closed, and let's go to consider an act on ordinance number 2021-4358, levying the ad valorem rate of 0.784481 for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-4358, levying the ad valorem rate of point zero, 0.784481 for fiscal year 2021-2022, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
I second.
Favor of the council?
Four.
Please pass this your ordinance number 2021-4358. Council member Abrego?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Fortin Squares?
Yes.
And Mayor Blommons?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the city manager to consider an act on resolution approving tax-free sale property suite number S-05-1093-TX, account numbers 36204 and 001104500025002, lots 25 and 26. Original town size, of city Ranses Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, located on Wright Street. A bid offer was submitted by Next Lots Properties LLC in the amount of $12,600, which is 66.67% of the current value.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, the, um, some background to give you on this. Uh, this has been before you, before, and is coming back to you as a, as a reminder. All of these, from 7-1 through 7-5, are with, uh, Next Lots, and had a discussion with the Next Lots several days ago, and they wanted to point out to you that they have a new maintenance company. Uh, they were unhappy with the maintenance company they did have, uh, that was maintaining their property. Uh, so they have a new company on board, they wanted me to point that out to you, which I'm doing. Um, you can take each, plus we have a, um, our consultant here, uh, with us if you have specific questions. If you wanna take them all, I understand, if you wanna take them all at the same time, you could do that, um, all five, all, all 7-1 through 7-5, or take them individually, that's up to you. Uh, so, um, uh, that's some background on it, and just wanna make you aware of that.
I'm okay to take them all at once. God bless, and those around you.
Do all five at the same time?
Yes.
Uh, in the past, we've already kinda discussed, when it comes up to tax properties, that we would want to kinda know exactly what they intend on doing this. Do we have any intent, any ideas of what their intentions on doing this property, especially when they're buying it at the lower rate? I mean, do we know yet?
I think we can answer that, um, and I think our consultant can answer that. At this point, for specific properties, we do not know, unless you are aware of something as far as the usage for those properties. Please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Robert Corvus, I'm the office manager for Line Barter Dog, Clarence Simpson. Mr. Sal Sudo could not make it, this evening, so he asked me to, to fill in and answer any questions that might come up. Specifically, um, I've talked to Mr. Schmidt, uh, for Next Lots, and specifically, he doesn't have, uh, an exact, uh, uh, plan for each one. He basically, I'm not pitching his, uh, his, uh, his, what his intent is, but what he has told me in the past is what he does is, he sells to people that can't get or buy property through banks, and then, uh, they then improve the property, uh, and, uh, then, and then they pay off him, and then they, that property that they can live in and it's taxable value. And again, I have not seen that personally, but that's what he has told me. He's purchased property all over the state, uh, specifically in our area, he's purchased property in Oasis County, Jim Wells County, Claybrook County, um, so he does, he does a lot of business. Uh, his business model is generally that. Again, I can't pitch for him or specifically, uh, voucher him, but that's what generally he does.
Uh, does that, so I saw y'all with the exact, what they wanted to do, cause it kinda just, what he just described, sounds like he's gonna come in and try to make as much money off each one of these properties, refinance them to somebody else that was, you know, after somebody unfortunately lost it, because he financed them at whatever knows rate, and then somebody else is gonna come in and buy it. So it sounds like it's just gonna be like a real, uh, a real profitable business. Uh, but I thought we had some more goals and more, uh, kinda centered what we wanted for Ranses Pass when it came to buying up these, these tax properties, and I think, uh, Ms. Moore, I think you did mention that, that you would like to know a total plan of what was going on, and that doesn't sound like a very good plan to me that's gonna really profit, uh, the citizens of Ranses Pass. We don't even know if he's gonna build, or he's gonna sit on them. There, there was no, uh, I didn't really get any exact answer if we're gonna be able to collect property taxes on something that he builds, or...
He was here, the paper was here probably about a few months.
That's right, all these questions you, you've answered already.
About three months ago, he was here.
That's right.
He was here about three months ago, and he says what he does, just exactly what, that he sells to people that are not able to, and they build homes on those, and he gave us, I know the city secretary gave us the list of who the property owners are that he has sold to, and that, he says, most of those properties have homes already built. He does not go and build homes, he sells to individuals that their credit is not strong enough to go to a bank in order to buy property to build a home that they wanna build.
So these are all lots?
They're all lots.
Do they have city services?
I'm assuming they do because they're in the city of Ranses Pass.
That, yeah, no. No, that's not, yeah, no.
Generally, that's, that's, that's generally the way it works, but I know there's a couple here in, uh, Seven Street, those kinda areas, that I don't, I'm, I'm not that familiar with the Ranses Pass. I've driven, inspected property, been a Ranses Pass in the past, I know some don't, specifically.
Specifically, you couldn't tell me. Um, what I would, I would like is go ahead and look at them individual, and if you're looking at, uh, some of them that are way, you know, look at some of these 31.9, you know, 19, there's some, you know, it's getting kinda low there. Uh, and instead of doing them all together like you just suggested, why don't we go ahead and look at them?
We had said a 30%. Uh, we wouldn't take less than 30% of what the value was of the property, and that's how we came up with these numbers.
That's still low, I think we're still settling.
Well, you have to understand that they were...
Why do we wanna settle? We just lowered our tax rate, people, I mean, we just lowered our tax rate, correct? We just lowered our tax rate. So why don't we wanna settle?
Well, the bad part is, when these things make it past the courthouse steps, that means nobody wants them.
Yeah.
And then, it'll come to us, and people bid on them, and you're only getting one person to bid on these properties. And you could look at it, taking a chance both directions, we could sit on it, and then may not be able to sell it for 10 years, and once it, once the property changes hands to another owner, it goes back on the tax roll. We'll start making money whether there's a tree on it or a house, it won't matter.
Well, I do understand that, but where are these properties? Do we know exactly where these properties are? Cause I do understand that a lot of these properties, you know, some of them out there on North Side, they don't get utilities, they don't get nothing. So, as long as y'all are comfortable with it, I am, I just wanna go ahead and, and did, do bring up that we had spoken, and I heard public comment on, you know, what exactly, exactly is the word that I remember hearing, and this ain't exactly what's going on. It's very vague on, on the description of what's gonna be going on with these properties, but I have the utmost confidence in y'all, so...
Right now, nothing's going on with them, do you just sit there, and we're not collecting no taxes whatsoever?
And Next Lot is famous for coming in when they don't sell on the, on the courthouse steps and trying to sell them to somebody for development.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard for us to hold their feet to the fire, to make that be like somebody going to your house telling you, put up a fence tomorrow, and you look at them like they're crazy, it's kinda the, kinda same scenario.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, thank you so much, you know, I trust you all's opinion. Thank you, appreciate you.
Cause I think we're, I think we're going to a good spot on this, Rebel Saldivar, 190 East Johnson. At the workshop we had a couple of weeks ago for the rezoning, there was also the issue of, hey, how do these things get on the courthouse steps? The lawyer here, that was presented, said, because the Ranses Pass is in two counties, um, Ranses County and then San Patricio, there's two ways to get the word out, right? In Ranses Pa, or in Ranses County, it's in the Rockport paper, in Ranses Pass, it's in some kinda paper no one ever heard about called San Patricio Daily News, right?
Yeah.
And so our point was, hey, we need to like, get the word out for people around here that maybe wanna throw in a thousand bucks and buy a property, or, or just maybe have a, uh, an opportunity to participate. So I think we're, I think we're, um, gonna get there, sir, but we just, I think we're just, um, not there yet. These sales right now, they're, they're, they're low. If we're gonna, if we're growing, if we have our master plan, and we're gonna bring in all these new houses and remove blight, and invest in the downtown, and all these great things, right? Um, it seems like we are not doing ourselves a favor by not holding tight just a little bit longer till we resolve, right? Till we resolve a process where anyone in the city who wants to bid on these properties has to be able to know about them and then see what happens, right? Now, what he does though, this, this, this Next Lot guy, um, I can't fault it, right? He's, he's providing money to people who can't get a loan. He does make a small, you know, he, uh, 10% interest rate, it's not excessive, it's, you know, right now it's 2%, right? So he's making an 8% number, but I just feel that we are underwriting his profit when we give him at a low, a lower level, right? And I, I think that arbitrarily speaking, 50% should be the floor, not 30%. But I think we need to get more work on this, and more people involved, and more people, uh, the ability to stitch these up, cause at some point, right, it's coming, right? Ranses Pass is gonna look like Port A, and there's not gonna be any more lots for sale, there's not gonna be any undeveloped lands, there's not gonna be any more blight, it's coming, it might be 50 years or 100 years, but it's coming, so, you know, if we're doing okay, if we're painting the house outside, and we're giving our, our firefighters and our, our, our police, uh, much deserved raises, I wish to get more, that we need to make it up on things like this. Let the people from North Dallas and North Texas, you know, pay their way, but we shouldn't pay their way.
I, I did speak to, uh, the new general manager at the Progress Newspaper, and she is going to publish these, so I'll get back with her to, cause I thought they would already been in the paper, so I'll get back with her.
Well, let me, let me say, excuse me, I did speak with her.
Oh, good.
Yes, I, uh, I had a meeting with Steve, uh, I contacted her, and I asked specifically in her office, while we were publishing the Ranses Pass Progress and Ingleside Index, and the, the, the answer was, was that San Patricio News is considered a county-wide newspaper. So when we publish these tax sales, they need to be in a county-wide newspaper. Now, listen, we can't publish in the Ranses Pass Progress, which we will.
Right.
Um, and as far as, um, notifying people who are interested in these properties, we do, um, provide any, and any person who, any person who wants to buy these, we give them a list, and then, uh, at the tax sale, the first sale at the courthouse steps, if it gets struck off, we do tell them it's gonna go on the list, contact our office, and we'll give you that list if you wanna bid on them. So, as soon as we get that information, we give it to people, and then, of course, we have a website people can look at and review, and then they can contact us here in Corpus, cause we have about 25, 26 offices nationwide, specifically in Texas, that's all, this is where we started with property tax. So, just wanna let you know that we do, you know, try to accommodate everyone when they call about a list, and if they need any information regarding these properties, we will give them as much as they need. So, um, I just wanna remind the council also that, like you said, Mr. Knight, these properties have been struck off for a reason, they're not sold on the courthouse steps. Our goal, and this is not only you as a council, but other councils and other board members, and the school boards and county commissioners, and other counties, they deal with the same questions, and the important thing is, what we say is, to, if you have a bidder and it has been on the tax, off the tax roll, get it off the tax roll, get, I'm sorry, get it on the tax roll.
On the tax roll.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, and, and get some, you know, get, and these bids, and I'm not pitching for Mr. Knight, it was, you know, me, or, and not even anyone bidding, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, I was in, anyone, uh, it's about, these five bids represent about $58,000 in, in, in monies that will be collected, uh, by the city and the school and the county. Uh, and then it'll go to somebody who hopefully will pay the taxes, and who will get it to someone who will, who will eventually... ...for a reason, and, um, you know, it's up to you all, you know, it's, we just, we bring the bids to you, and then you decide ultimately, because you know what's best for Ranses Pass, so...
And we have turned down lots of these bids, a lot of them, but these are finally coming up to, to more suitable.
I had a bunch of, we were, owed them to city council a couple of years ago, there's a vacant lot there on, on the main drag, and they had the same kinda questions, you know, and they said, why should we approve this bid? I said, it's up to, you know, you as a council, accept or reject the offer, if you don't think it's enough, we go back. In Duval, I'm saying Duval County, I think I might've said this last time, they, you know, they'll, they'll, uh, accept the offer if it's, if it's high enough, if not, they'll come back and say, no, we want more for the acreage or whatever. But ultimately, it's your decision, and, uh, you know, your goal, like we tell everyone, is to get it back on the tax roll.
I don't re, I don't remember if we asked that that list for properties here in Ranses Pass could be sent to us, that we could post it on our, our, uh, website also.
Uh, and has it been done? I can only go to them all.
I think that would be also a great, a great addition, everybody looks at the website.
Sure.
So if we could do that, I appreciate that.
Good deal.
If you could create a feed that we can pull from, from your website, we can put it straight on our website, every time you make a change, it changes on our side.
Very good, that was easy.
Are there gonna be any kinda contingencies with the, the properties? Are they gonna be able to just sit there for two years with nothing being done? Uh, is, is there gonna be anything put in place to, you know, hey, get us some, some property taxes? Don't let it sit there like a, a lot for another two or three, 10, 15, I don't know. Is there anything in place?
If Next Lot buys a property, he has to pay the taxes on the property taxes.
But at that rate, that's not bad.
Yeah, and if...
At that rate, that's not bad.
And if the original owner decides to come back and pay the taxes that are owed, they can actually reclaim that property. Am I correct with that?
Within...
Within two years.
Within two years, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a redemption.
Yes, there's a redemption period, uh, within a two-year period, if it's a homestead or aggie's property, um, and then if it's a vacant lot, or we build it, we'll see.
Y'all got some really great guys over here working for you. I've, yeah, I mean, I thought, I thought y'all overnight did some stuff one time. They were on top things, thank you.
So Hector, why haven't you been on some of these properties? Come on!
I'm, I'm fine, yes.
Then I'll make a motion that we, um, consider approving tax sale properties 7-1 through 7-5.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
Do we have...
Do we have a roll call?
No.
Okay, now we're gonna go to...
Thanks.
We're gonna go to consider an act on the issues of request for proposal for administrative services related to hazard mitigation assistance, HMA, HMA grant programs.
There are actually the one next to it, the one after that is also related to this. This is for administrative services, the one after this is for engineering services. What this is, folks, or mayor and council, I'm sorry, uh, what this is, uh, is a grant that will open up at the end of this, and it ends in January. will open up at the end of this year, and it ends in January.